Okay. Good evening, everybody. We're going to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, September 14th, 2021. This meeting is being video and audio recorded for future cable broadcast. Please silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. We are going to start with our approval of minutes, payroll, and warrants. If I could request a motion, please to approve the minutes of August 17th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. And seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Those are approved. And we will need, if I could ask for a motion to approve payroll and warrants?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And those are approved. We're going to move into delegation. I do want to mention before we begin delegation that you might have seen Mrs. Benavides upon entering. We are starting a new process with delegation where we're just asking folks to, if they're planning to comment during delegation, that they sign in for the meeting. This will just help us to track who's speaking for public record. So if you still, if you didn't get a chance to write your name down upon entering, you can see Mrs. Benavides, could you just raise your hand, Mrs. Benavides? And quickly sign before you approach the microphone this evening. So with that, I'd like to invite anyone from the public to join us at the microphone for public delegation.
We had nobody sign up.
And no one had signed. Okay. All right. So we'll move on then to old business. And Dr. Bailey, I'll pass that to you to give us an update on the mask mandate.
Yep. I don't have an update, but as you can recall, we said we were going to keep it on the agenda moving forward. Nothing has changed since our last meeting. There's no new updates from the Department of Education, elementary and secondary education. So I'll turn it back to you.
Okay. Just would like to, any questions, members?
Any question? Has the Department of Education Commissioner sent you any information on staff vaccinations? Or any people that come in contact with children?
No.
No, there's been very silent on that. And I was wondering if you had any information. Thank you.
Nothing yet.
Any other questions? Okay. All right. Moving on to new business then. Dr. Bailey, I'll hand it over to you again for your personnel report.
Okay. Included in your packet is my personnel report. You can see that we've had, since our last meeting, eight new staff members hired. We had four resignations, two retirements effective immediately, and one temporary transfer. We were having trouble finding an eighth grade math teacher, so this is hopefully very temporary while we're still in the process of hiring. Does anybody have any questions regarding the personnel report?
I do have a question. Just curious, I think we had two resignations last time for this time, so I'm just wondering, is that volume high in terms of what we would typically see? Is there anything of concern, you know, in terms of why people are leaving?
Yep. So it is typical to see resignations at the end or the beginning of a school year, whether it's the very end of the summer. Something, for example, in one case, somebody got something very close to where they live in the community in which they live, so they don't have to commute anymore. But it's nothing of concern. We've been able to pretty much fill all of them except for that math position. And I believe the middle school principal has a plan for that, so that should be very temporary.
All right. Thank you.
Next up, I have, I'd like to introduce our nutrition director, Jean Sheridan. She has a very special recognition, and she brought some of her staff along today. So this is a great moment, I think, for Shelley Mello, but I'll let Jean do the introductions.
Hi again. I'm Jean Sheridan, Director of School Nutrition. I've been active in school nutrition of mass for many years, and one of the greatest honors you can get is to be awarded Director or Hourly Employee or Manager of the Year. And I'm very pleased to announce that Shelley Mello, who was then at Akushnet Elementary School, who is now here, has been awarded the 2021 School Nutrition Association Manager of the Year. She, it was a large pool and a much honored, and we're very pleased to have that sort of recognition. Just to tell you a little bit about Shelley, she joined the Akushnet Schools full-time in 2003. So I don't think anybody's here quite young enough to have had her, but one of the nice parts is, I would say, Shelley knows all the kids' names, no matter how many kids are at AES. She knows them, she engages with them, she is very good with them. Part of the things Shelley's done in her initiatives at AES, you all know the Veterans Day celebration. She was very integral in getting that started and continuing it, and hopefully we'll see that again next year. End of the year, Eat the Alphabet. She does try it Thursdays. There's nothing that we're not doing that she's always trying to showcase who we are and let the kids know what's going on. We all know it's been a challenge in the last year for every reason in the world. Both she and her staff have stepped up. We've done summer meals last spring. When we were at home, Shelley planned and organized a 12-week training program for the staff, so stayed very engaged. And for me, I think one of the things Shelley, as a tribute to you, is the John Stalker Institute at Framingham State offers a Certificate of Excellence class for school nutrition, hourly and managers' people. It is rigorous. I've been doing this a long time, and I'm glad I don't have to be doing that. We got to work together on class assignments, and it's a tribute that she has completed it, and again, in honor. So I would like to both recognize Shelley and Dee Silva, who has worked for Shelley for how many years?
Over seventeen.
Over seventeen. So Dee, if you want to come up, Dee. Dee is the new ma, ladies, come on up. Come on. So Dee, do you want to say a word and then?
Well, it was an honor to work for her, and she worked really hard to get where she is right now. And she deserves it.
Oh, sorry. Paul, thank you, and thanks Shelley for all she brings to the Akushnet Public Schools.
Shelley, did you want to say a few words?
I'd just like to thank everybody. I appreciate this recognition, but I kind of have fun doing all of it, to be honest with you. I enjoy it, so, but thank you for the recognition. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Shelley.
Congratulations, Shelley.
The words right out of my mouth is that you are a very fun person, and I think anybody who walks into the cafeteria at either school, before it was the elementary school, now it's at Ford Middle School, the atmosphere is so positive in the cafeteria. She makes it fun. She makes it look festive, and I just want to thank her because I know how much the children love going into her cafeteria. So congratulations on that very special award, School Nutrition Manager of the Year, 2020. Congratulations again.
Congratulations. I'm smiling under my mask.
I think we all are.
Yes, we are. Next, I have a short presentation regarding our Summer Acceleration Academy. As you know, in past years, we've had summer school for our special education students. And this year, with some of the grant money, we were able to offer students additional summer school time. So I'd actually like to call up Kyle Gallivan, who is the site coordinator, worked very closely with our Director of Curriculum, Angie Rigori.
I came prepared with a flipper. All right. So just showing us our photo here. Number one, it wasn't, I was the site coordinator. This was an honor and a privilege to really be able to do this. And as you can see here, our kids are right there. They're happy this was our end-of-program celebration, and they've got their hands up. Oh, let's see if it works. That was not working. Next slide. I was prepared, but it's dead. So this summer, we did have two different programs. The first one was a month-long program in July. That was four weeks in length, and we had four days a week, so that was Monday through Thursday, from 9:00 to 12:00 a.m. Our second program, oh, that one was for grades two to eight, and we had two locations, one at the elementary school, one at the middle school here. Our second program was our Acceleration Academy. That was one week in August. So that one week was a full day, and the way that the state marketed that is, one day of an Acceleration Academy was one week of school overall. So intense, but very, very important for those kids, because this was a great way to make sure that they retain their skills and then also gain some new ones. So when we think about these programs, what we ended up doing was making database decisions. So we triangulated our students. We looked at STAR. We looked at DIBELS. We looked at Galileo, which are all different types of assessments to identify students that were in need, and then make sure that we reached out to those families, and if they were available, they were able to attend that program. And that was the same for both. And so overall, we had over 60 students. There was very limited overlap in both of those programs. There were some, but it was a way for us to reach as many students as possible. So when we think about the elementary school during that summer program, we had three different elementary school teachers from the Akushnet Public Schools. They used Achieve 3000, which is a company that provides literacy in math curriculum, as well as Freckle and other high-quality resources. They had two blocks a day, an hour and a half of ELA, and then math. As we walked around this program, those were engaging lessons that kept students engaged and interacting with the curriculum. And again, we focused on skill retention and also filling any of those gaps. Looking at our results, because I'm very big on data, we had 90% of students in that program that maintained or grew because of it. So that was based on our assessments for our ELA. You're looking at our assignments that we made. 60% of those assignments saw an overall grade of above a 75. So both of those programs that our teachers implemented, whether it was the ELA or the math, were successful. We can see that from these numbers. The middle school was slightly different. Due to a personnel shortage, we did have to do a remote program. So we had three paras that were working with our students with an online program, and that was for ELA and math. That was through Apex Learning. So students would go log on each day. The paras were there to provide support. We also had a live chat feature and some tutors that were in-person as well. When we look at this, when we're looking at passing scores, 97% of our students had a passing score in ELA and 71% for math. And then when we look at our growth, 70% of our ELA students saw growth versus 53% with math. Part of this, since I like data, was asking the students what they thought about the program, and this was specifically for the middle school. So when you're looking at this piece of data, I asked them, I think that the summer program will help me do better next year. And as you can see from there, only 8% disagreed with that statement. So right there, 92% of our middle school students saw that this program was of value. Next question. For students that felt that they were learning new things, you can see overwhelmingly that students felt that they were learning something new, as well as things that they had seen before. And then we had to ask them, do you think you would have done better at home or working at school? Since this was an in-person program while it was digital. And 75% of those middle school students did agree that working in school was better than working at home. So our faculty, you can see this list here, it was, we have a few people that worked in both programs, but you have people from the middle school working with the elementary school, elementary people working at the middle school. You see people up here that are with our food services, interventionists, all of them came together during this program and really gave our students a great experience. But there is one person here today that I do want to call up, because this Fairhaven High School student volunteered his time, three weeks of his time, to come and help our students. So he was our in-person tutor. He actually reached out to us. And so in recognition of that, we do have a certificate of appreciation for Nicholas Grace.
Thank you, Nicholas. Go ahead.
So at the end of this program, because the kids worked really, really hard, we were able to put on an end-of-program celebration, thanks to the PTO and to the Akushnet Emergency Response Team. Immediately, once we started putting this together, the town was so supportive of us. Here you can see just one photo from our touch-a-truck, but the PTO provided us with a magician show. They provided us with Dell's Lemonade that all the kids could have on that hot summer July day. And overall, it was a resounding success, as we'll see on the next one. We have students that were inside of those touch-a-trucks. You can see the magician bringing students up. We had a kickball game, students making some bracelets, and then they also each received a certificate to recognize their hard work. Also included in that end-of-program celebration, we did provide them with these two games. Snippets is a game where students, it's literacy-focused. Students get two letters, and then they have to make as many words as they possibly can with that. And the person who makes, who can make the most words with those two letters wins the game. So we're reinforcing that they were able to take that home, they played it with their teachers before they left, and then they were able to play it with their families when they got home. And that adds some Moody, which is a fun game, is all about math. So there's a number in the center, and the students had to use addition, subtraction, multiplication, multiplication, or division to get to that number. So it goes up in difficulty, whether they're using two, three, four, or the hardest is all five of those numbers. And it really creates, and how do I want to say that? It gets kids talking about math, especially with their parents. So it was a great, great to be able to provide that and recognize them for their hard work. I think that's it. So are there any questions for me? Yeah?
I just want to make sure I understood. So if I understood you, 90% maintained or grew, and then if we look at just grew, 53% was the number of folks that grew in math.
Right. Right.
Any questions? No?
All right. Thanks so much.
That's great. Thank you.
Mr. Gallivan, I just want to thank you. This was actually your first stint at administration.
Right.
And you did a phenomenal job. You were so organized. Our students loved being in the summer program, and our staff loved it, and it's all thanks to your organization, and I expect to see more. And it just shows that we're growing our own. We're trying to build leadership capacity. Mr. Gallivan was in the classroom at the middle school. He's now in a coaching position and is studying to be a school administrator. So I'm sure this is not, this is not the last time that we will see you in these roles, but really wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I would just like to thank Nicholas back there, too.
Oh, absolutely. Nicholas, thank you so much. And if I recall, you do some other volunteer work in the school occasionally, yes?
Yeah, I'm a little one in the road, honestly.
Yes.
Oh, you revealed the secret.
I just gave it up, Nicholas.
Thank you for all of your volunteer efforts. Very much appreciated.
Mr. Oliver, we're going to have to put a disclosure, a disclaimer, before that comes out. Remove all children. We had a little secret that was slipped. We're going to have to put a disclosure out there. Remove all children from the room. I can't repeat it again. We'll tell you later.
We'll tell you later.
So next up in my report, I'm going to turn this over to Angie Rigori, our Director of Curriculum. She is going to discuss the Bully Prevention Program, the Bullying Prevention Program. And I don't want to take away with anything that you have in the presentation, so I'm going to just turn it over to you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So every two years, the school district leadership and the wellness committee team is going to be revising our and updating our bullying prevention and intervention plan in accordance with the anti-bullying law. So that is what we've been working on as of late, and we come to you tonight with a plan that we have created. This was developed in consultation with school staff, professional support personnel, administrators, community representatives, and families. There has been an open public comment period for several months now, starting in the spring of 2021, and families were reminded of this in biweekly newsletters that went home. So the plan is really just our blueprint for enhancing our capacity to prevent and respond to bullying within the context of other healthy school climate initiatives. As part of this process, we assess the adequacy of current programs and practices. We reviewed available data on bullying, and we assess the available resources that we had. In the proposed plan, you'll see content regarding training and professional development, access to resources and services, academic and non-academic activities to support bullying prevention efforts, policies and procedures for reporting and responding to bullying, harassment, and retaliation, collaboration with families, information on the process for seeking assistance or filing a claim, and the district incident reporting form. And this does need to be taken to a vote. Are there any questions?
I have no questions. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question. Very, I, you know, read that policy and, you know, and it was very comprehensive, detailed, and I applaud your efforts in putting all the details together. I had, was just one question, and this may be 0.001% of the case, where the parents on the home life contribute to the student being the aggressor. It may be, it may be some anger, or maybe, maybe any type of situations or, you know, dysfunctions within the, within the, within the home, and the child, the student is really, is no longer now the aggressive, but also a victim. Is there a mechanism by which you can make referrals, like 51As, you know, with, you know, with the old DSS, it has another name now, but are any other intervention that will help that, get the help for that youngster that goes beyond what you can be offering here because of the parent, parent resistance and influence for a variety of reasons?
Yes. So in this plan, I think it addresses the access to resources and services, and the department, the various agencies that we would be able to work with to provide supports for students or even reporting a 51A, those are all agencies that the school has, that we work with to support student needs.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Teves?
Hi. I just had a question in regards to, there's a lot of mention to cyberbullying and things like that. I was just curious, and I kind of went back to the handbook to see if there was anything on, any rules on kind of how cell phones and social media access and things like that in school? Or I'm just wondering if there's any, anything in the school rules, particularly for the middle school, in terms of cellphone access, social media use and access while in school? You know, pictures being able to be snapped in school? Is there anything in the handbook that would kind of?
So in the handbook, in school, students' cell phones are supposed to be off and out of sight. And we don't so much see the occurrence of social media and pictures and issues happening in school. Now, what we will see sometimes is spill over from outside of school coming, right, and the, and the issues with social media and the cellphone usage spilling into the school. And then there's always that line, right, of where, where does one start and one stop and one end? And I, and, you know, I think anytime that it's becoming either unsafe or a situation that's interfering with the education, so the school will intervene and become involved. We did do a survey last year, and it was a gigantic leap, the number of students who have cell phones in the fifth grade compared to the eighth grade, and also how often, you know, do they bring them to school? So thankfully, you know, our students are just so, they really are, we have a great group of students, and they generally, you know, we don't have a major issue with cellphone usage in the schools. Now and again, students will be reminded to turn it off and put it away, and there's a, I think there's a progressive discipline there for that, where they get a warning, you know, it gets taken to the main office. At some point, a parent needs to come in. At some point, there may be a meeting that has to happen. So there's a progressive discipline spelled out in the handbook for that.
Okay.
So it sounds to me like whether you're, if you're an aggressor cyber, in cyberspace, using social media or you're in person, it's going to be handled in the same manner as bullying, whether it's in person or online?
Yes.
To some degree.
To some degree.
If it's spilling, if there's evidence that it's spilling over in school. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So we would need to take a vote on this?
Yes. So we are taking a vote to approve the Bullying Prevention Program Plan, that's Prevention and Intervention Plan that's been presented by Mrs. Rigori. If I could have a motion of approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It has been approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your work on that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rigori, and thank you to the board for the approval. Next up, I have the Test and Stay COVID Testing Program. The state has put out to all of the districts, and they're recommending a Test and Stay COVID Testing Program. Ms. Bettencourt and I have been working, you know, constantly on this with webinars, meeting with folks, but the idea is by having this program, we will hopefully be able to keep students in school as opposed to needing, having them quarantine at home like last year. If students were identified as close contacts, it was just, you have to quarantine. It's very different this year, and this has been vetted out with our CCR team, our COVID Crisis Response Team. And I know, Ms. Gomes, you were at that meeting. So it's been discussed with the Board of Health, with our fire chief, with our district administrators, and it's something that we are recommending. So with that, I have Ms. Bettencourt, take it from here.
My new name is COVID Queen. Self-proclaimed.
Just, just a quick question. Was there anything included in our packets on this? No?
Okay. Just wanted to confirm. Thank you. No, and you'll, after we kind of get talking, you'll see why you don't have anything particularly right now.
Got it.
So we're hopeful tonight that the school committee will give us the go-ahead to pursue the Test and Stay program, and we wanted to give information to the community and families around what the program is, what we can offer here at school. And this is going to actually be included in the parent letter if we are able to go forward with the Test and Stay. This is a link to CIC Health. They are the kind of overarching agency that's going to be coordinating all of the COVID Test and Stay programs for the Commonwealth. So there's local representatives that are going to be contracted through CIC. Our local office would be out of Fall River. We have a contact person that I've been working with to gather information, to be able to prepare at least a presentation and some information for families. So if you want to just scroll a little bit, when you get, parents get the letter, this will be the first site that's in the link. Oop, go up a little bit. I'm sorry. There's a consent now, so if you feel really good after listening tonight and looking at the website, parents can go right on, consent electronically. If you click the Learn More button. If you click the learn more button, it will bring you down to some more information, including a short video. So if we can hit that, Chris, that would be great. And I figured this would be a nice preview. It's probably a four-minute video, so I thought it would be great for this group to see.
If you need socialization, you need other parents, you need to change their place. They're like their parents, because they don't want to be back in school.
I hardly.
When schools started opening up again, my 15-year-old couldn't have been happier. The only thing that she was really disappointed about was that not that many of her classmates came back.
Bringing the students back to a level of normalcy is very important for their overall health and well-being.
I've been in public health my entire career. This crisis has been like no other. We know an incredibly important part of stopping this pandemic is stopping transmission. And testing not only helps keep your school safe, it also makes it so people that are unknowingly infected do not spread it in the community. It makes a difference for all of us. What testing does is it allows us to have comfort that we will recognize when outbreaks occur and be able to be transparent about what the levels of virus are in the school.
The way we run school testing now, it just takes a few minutes once a week, is an incredibly light touch on the school. It really takes very little time, and it gives everyone, the teachers, the parents, confidence that they are not sending kids into a school around other kids that are transmitting the virus.
CIC Health has been a great partner to us here at DPS. They've been instrumental in all of the moving pieces. So to date, we've administered over 5,000 pooled tests. It allows us to bring most students back and to feel secure that they'll be safe.
There are a lot of ways to test for COVID, and many different approaches being used in schools. We here at CIC Health have probably used every possible technology and approach. The testing methodology that we found that we liked best is what's called source pooled testing. It's a form of pooled testing where approximately 10 kids put variable swabs, one, two. It has the advantages of being very cheap because the cost to process that one, two is what it used to cost to process individual tests. It's about 10 times cheaper.
Here are the advantages of the pooled testing approach. It's highly accurate. These are the same molecular tests that are used to make diagnosis. Down to pretty young ages, kids consult swab just in the front of their nose and get highly accurate results. By pooling these together, that allows us to know whether there is infection in the classroom or not without collecting personal health information, making a lot of the management of the process so much simpler to operate.
The whole process is so light touch on the school. We know that it keeps COVID from spreading in the schools.
We are now deploying this school testing COVID in more than 500 schools, and that number is growing on a weekly basis. We have done this, and we made it smooth and accurate, and it has made it easy for schools to keep these programs going.
Students are adapting greatly. They know the steps, they understand it, and they're able to perform it. Before, you wouldn't know if a student had COVID, if they were asymptomatic. And now we have a way of knowing and acting quickly. There's a sense of feeling safe within the schools.
If we can help, and we can help you in whatever way we can, that's what I want to do.
Seeing the students come back, watching them play at recess, seeing them smile, that, it means everything to me.
So what they don't show you in the video is, I think, some of the benefits to the district. I met today with three of the team from what would potentially be our contact location, our agency, who would be with us Monday through Friday, nine to two. They would take over all of the COVID parent contact, contact tracing, doing all of the testing. In the video, you see that they showed the nasal swab, kids self-swabbing. We've also reached out to them because there is an option for a saliva test. And when we felt, you know, if we have that as an option, that might be something that parents would be more interested in. It's less invasive, but as you saw with the self-swab, it's not like the, the usual PCR tests that have to go pretty deep into the nasal cavity to get, you know, what's needed for an accurate test. So having kids be able to self-swab, I think it's more helpful if we do go with the, the nasal swab. If it is a saliva, it's little tubes, and they would just deposit a, a bit of saliva, and then that would be processed as well. So we're waiting to hear about, you know, if we have both options available. We would like, definitely like to take advantage of having both of those. For us, we'd look at probably once a week, testing maybe Monday mornings in homerooms so that we would have a really accurate picture of what our district looked like by Tuesday midday. If we saw any classrooms had uptick of positives, then we would test individually each student in that classroom. Anybody who was positive would then have to quarantine and follow that normal course of quarantine process like we would, the 10 days, the 14 days. But it's also helpful that if there's kids in the classroom with somebody who's positive and they test negative, they can stay. And normally, if you were a close contact, you'd have to quarantine. So the test and stay is really a nice option for us to be able to keep kids in school and really have a dipstick just about once a week of, of really what our whole district looks like in terms of positivity rate. Sarah?
Would it be each class would get tested once a week?
We would probably do the whole district once a week if we did the pool testing. So that would be randomly chosen, you know, eight or 10 kids. We would keep track of that, so we wouldn't keep going to the same eight or 10 kids every week. So a sample of the class would do a test, and then those would all be sent to be tested. If the class test is negative, then the assumption is the whole class is negative. If the class test sample is positive, then we would individually test each of the students in the classroom. So potentially, if we keep having negative pool tests, we would never have to really test anybody, a whole class individually. It would just be those random samplings of students each week.
You would test the whole class or just the 10 kids that?
Just the 10. We would do that class sample first.
Okay.
And then if it was positive, we would go to each individual person.
And the cost is being covered by the state, not the district?
We pay nothing for the staff person, nothing for the test kits, nothing for the service. I've been waiting for the but, and there has not been one. So it was great to talk with the, the two people who could potentially be deployed to our district every day. And they would take care of kind of all the COVID management for our district. Yeah, John?
It's my understanding, there's, there's the, the pooled testing, and then there's the test and stay, correct? And that video is all about the pooled testing.
It's part of the whole, the, the pooled testing is part of the test and stay.
So a test and stay is essentially, okay, we've got a, let's call it a close contact situation, and then, then all of those people are able to test to see if they can continue to go to school instead of needing to quarantine, correct? And so to me, that, I think that's more effective than pooled testing, especially when, I'm not sure what percentage of people, I don't know if you've read the, the, the form that the, the parents have to sign to release this, it's pretty intense. It's, it's far more involved than you would imagine. I, I've read it, and I was like, oh my God, I don't know how many people are going to actually sign off on this, so. And I don't know how effective it would be to, you know, have a small percentage of the kids being pooled tested, and then you're like, okay, one of you is like positive, now we got to go individually test everybody. I just think that, for the most part, if the people are getting individually tested in the community when they need it, and, and then if there's, you know, an incident or some sort of close contact, then I think the test and stay program has a lot of value, I think, for, for the schools. But I'm not so sure about the pooled testing. That one's kind of, I'm not sold on that one, but.
We, and we have the availability to choose whatever configuration of the test and stay program we want to do for a KUSHNET.
So we could, we could isolate and say, okay, the test and stay makes a lot of sense. The pooled testing just seems like, I'm not sure what that accomplishes, that type of thing?
I thought that was part of it.
It, it, it doesn't have to be part of it. We could individually test, we could not test at all. They've given us the availability to choose whatever elements of the program we would like. What we have to remember is the whole point of test and stay is to know what your demographic looks like all the time. There's a lot of our kids that have been positive have been asymptomatic, so we wouldn't know, and parents wouldn't necessarily go get them tested if they're not showing symptoms. The town, I don't believe, is going to be offering the level of testing that they have. It's my understanding that they're going to be stopping, you know, the, the availability of the amount of testing that they did for the community last year. So I don't know that we'll have Chief Gallagher's crew available to us once a week, you know, on a Wednesday or Saturday going forward. So as a district, we really want to make sure that we're responsible in picking up, you know, the availability to test as needed.
In order to be eligible to participate in this program, we have to get 50% participation of our families, or else it wouldn't be, it wouldn't make sense to do this.
And no child could be tested if they don't, if we don't have a consent on.
So our vote today is to allow you just to proceed with sending consent to parents? Okay.
Yep. Ron, any other question?
Just so I'm clear, I think if someone is deemed to be, say, a close contact, they have to be tested for five consecutive days. Is that not?
They get tested on day, at least day five?
Yeah. Oh, okay. Gotcha. Is this all grades?
This is all grades and staff. It's available to our staff as well, which is great. So Sarah, I know you had another question.
Is it five days, they have to quarantine for five days if they're considered a close contact and then get tested on day five, or they stay in the classroom until day five to get tested?
If they're asymptomatic, with this program, we would test them right away. So we would know immediately the next day if they were positive. Right now, without this program, I have had several in the last two weeks who have been close contacts, and those students have to quarantine and get tested, quarantine or get tested.
For how many days?
Ten, at least 10, if they're asymptomatic and fever-free. If they are not, then it's 14.
That's where I see the value in the test and stay, is you've got asymptomatic kids that are close contacts, and they can test immediately and, and stay in school. Like, that's where I see the.
It's a great benefit for that. You know, we heard, I think at one of our last meetings, we have a lot of working families, and, and to have kids home for two weeks quarantining is really an inconvenience. This will allow us to really turn that information around quickly. We'll know pretty regularly what our whole district looks like in terms of positivity rate.
But we wouldn't, we wouldn't know if someone was asymptomatic without the pool, right? I mean, how would you know?
If we chose to just, to just test every week, like we were doing on Wednesdays with our staff, if we just chose to test individual students without pool testing, then we would test individual students every week. The pooled testing allows you to just take a sampling of each class, and if that sample is po, is negative, then the assumption is the whole class is negative, and we wouldn't have to test anybody else.
Got it.
And by having those coordinators, they keep track, there's one adult at each building, they keep track so that the same kids, I know that Ms. Bettencourt mentioned it, but the same kids are not constantly being asked for the sample.
Right.
So it's random.
Yep.
This memo, I don't, maybe this is wrong or evolved since, but the way this reads is asymptomatic. This is the one we had, I think, from Jeff Riley, the commissioner, right? It says, "Close contacts will have the option to remain in school and be tested daily for at least five days."
If you're part of the test and stay program.
But that's not being tested every day? That's, you're saying on day five?
Right now, we're day five, it's, the recommendation is test at day five. If you were, if you were a close contact, there's not recommending that you get tested that day, the next day. It's, the fifth day is really when it's kind of that incubation period. So I think with the test and stay, we have the option to test all along to those five days, because if you're negative, negative, negative up to day five, you can still stay in school because you're testing negative. So there's that benefit of being able to stay as long as you are negative.
So there is a potential to be tested every single day for five days?
If you're, I mean, we haven't had any close contacts in school.
Okay.
So it would have to happen in school. There would have to be a transmission in school. It couldn't be that somebody on Saturday, the parents tested positive, and then we would test. The, the exposure has to happen in school for the test and stay program to happen. It couldn't be I get a phone call that on a weekend, a child was exposed. Then it's on, the parent would have to follow the regular process. This is basically during school day, school hours exposure.
So my thoughts, being a parent here, was that we as parents or as a school committee members don't have a choice about the quarantine guidelines that are coming from the state. We have no choice.
Right.
So even if we had voted for no masks, and the state allowed us to have no masks, we would still have to go through the whole quarantine thing.
Yes.
Which could have set classes remote, probably within maybe a couple of weeks or something like that. So with this in place, in my opinion, I feel it's the best way. We still have to wear the masks. However, parents do get to opt into this, which personally I would recommend, just so their kids can stay in school and they can, they can stay working. So that was my rationale with the whole thing, because I know a lot of parents are upset about the mask-wearing and everything. But regardless of the mask-wearing, there were still quarantine issues that we all had to deal with, which maybe wasn't clear at the last meeting that we had. But I'm trying to reiterate now that the, the quarantines were, were pretty strict, and it would probably, you know, could possibly shut us down.
And we don't have control over that, to your point.
Right, and again, we have no, no control.
And that hasn't changed. And the graphic that's up here, you know, if we do become part of the test and stay, this, this document will become yours, Jen, and to your question. I can't give this because this is test and stay materials.
Yeah, no problem.
But I did want to share, oh, sorry, Chris, if you scroll a little bit, this is how it is now. You test positive, you have to go home, you know, basically, that's it. You test positive, you go home, you can scroll, you follow the regular guidelines that are below as far as quarantining, testing, and all of that. In this design, if we did test and stay, you can see that up at the top, there's a pathway legend, it's called. There's a blue and kind of a coral, which you can't really see well up on the screen. But with the protocol B, there's options. So, Chris, if you could scroll just a little bit to the bottom, you see right there. So B1 is test and stay. We would have the option that if you were a close contact or if you could possibly be positive but asymptomatic, then we would test you as we would on the regular system, and we would use the test and stay. So we would follow what I just explained. If you did, were not part of the test and stay, then you would have to go to the traditional protocol. So if you were symptomatic, you would have to leave school, you would have to quarantine, you would have to then go get testing on your own, or choose to take the 10 to 14-day quarantine. So the test and stay really, you can see, it gives you a much quicker option to not have to leave if you do not test positive during, through the test and stay program.
I also believe that if parents choose at the beginning to not opt in, but then change their mind, they can opt in at any time.
Right. It's an opt-in, not an opt-out.
Right.
So unless we get consent, your child will not be part of the program. So.
But we would aim as a district to have at least 50% of students participating.
They won't start the program for us if we're not at least 50%.
Right. They would need enough demand. Yeah.
Makes sense. Any questions or comments?
Dr. Bailey, how do you feel, because I know we talked about this probably a month ago on the pooled testing. How do you feel about the pooled testing part of it?
So last year, I was not in favor of it at all. It seemed to be more invasive last year.
And I think on a standalone, pooled testing wouldn't be something that we would necessarily, there's no benefit to us to just do pooled testing for pooled testing's sake.
Yeah. Now, with the way it's, you know, less invasive, and it's only a limited amount, and it's random in terms of, it's not going to be the same children. And I think originally with the pooled testing, we didn't have the staff to do this. We did not have the resources. Our nurses were straight out. But now having a full-time COVID coordinator in each building, which is amazing to me that we're getting this at no cost, we will have somebody dealing with COVID. I mean, I know I deal with it. It's a big part of my day. I know it's a big part of.
It's all I've done this week.
This Bettencourt's day. But we will have a, a person at each building as a resource for students, for families. You know, I think it's something we could try. And again, it's something that the parents would have to opt in anyway, so we're not forcing anyone to do something they're not comfortable with. But I think the goal here, as we've all talked about, is this program, I think, will really help us keep kids in school. And no one realizes until you're in that situation, when you get that phone call as a parent, that your child is a close contact, and now they're home for 10 days.
We have a family right now who has three, three students in this district who are all close contacts of a family member. They're all quarantining at home.
You know, the work schedule for families is interrupted. And obviously, we know that our students don't receive the same type of education they do as when they're in school. So I think I'm definitely in favor of the test and stay program for sure. The pooled testing, I was not in favor of it last year. This year, I'm a little more open to it based on what I've seen, and also, many districts are doing it. So I, I think it's worth a try. I think, you know, So, I, I think it's worth a try. I think, you know, and if it's something, we can always adjust as we go. I like the idea that, you know, no one is forcing our hands to do it all. We can try it. We've been vetting it out through the CCR group that we meet with. Everybody in the group, I know the Board of Health, the Fire Chief, everybody who deals with COVID on an ongoing daily basis believes that this is a great program to keep kids in school.
What I'm hoping that this does is really help us in the months ahead about the mask policy, because if we can show that we're doing this test and stay, and we're doing this pool testing, and we're showing minimal results is what my hope is, that we can show that maybe the masks are not necessarily needed down the road. That's what I'm hoping, for me personally, as a school committee member. That is what I'm pretty much going at for. So, right now, just for argument's sake, Chief Gallagher did post the COVID results today, and we have 60 people in our town that have COVID. So, that's 0.56% of our population has COVID. That's not to say, when we had our COVID meeting, I did ask, you know, is it tracked? People that have COVID and then have to get tested weekly, is that tracked? And it is not. So, people that had COVID last week, tested positive, and then had to get tested this week, that, that's counted as two, not one, even though it's one person. And I just wanted to reiterate that again in public, just so people understand how this is working. The other thing is, you know, because 0.56 of the population has, has COVID, our school has, how many right now, kids?
Six students.
Six students.
Six students.
Six students, one adult, one staff.
We still have.
Second week of school.
In my opinion, a very low amount of COVID in our, in our town, which again, would, again, with the pool testing and parents hopefully opting into this, can again result in no masks in the near future, so.
My concern is in Week Two that we have six students and one staff, but those were families that went and got tested. They are asymptomatic. So, we don't really know how many students are walking around asymptomatic right now. And this will help us be able to see that, because we wouldn't have known that some of these kids were positive because they did not have any symptoms, so.
It'll be helpful all around, hopefully. Let's hope for low results.
And we've identified spaces in both schools where this will be not invasive to classroom and teaching and learning. And like I said, we have an adult in both schools that will be the COVID coordinator. So, I think it's something I'm recommending as, as our district, something we should try with the goal of keeping our students in school as much as possible. You know, after one week of school, already seeing six students test positive, and they're asymptomatic, you know, we, we don't really have an idea who's walking around with COVID.
I'm sorry, there was one other thing that I just wanted to bring to the public's attention. The other question that I asked during our, our COVID meetings was, you know, are, are we testing for the Delta variant, which everybody has been talking about? And what was said was, we can just assume that everything is the Delta variant. So, there isn't a specific test, and this pool test is not specific to the Delta variant. So, just want to make that clear as well to, to the public. Thank you.
Any questions? So, it looks like what you need from us tonight is a vote to proceed with getting parent consent for participation in this program. So, if I could request a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions?
Should I abstain from voting? This does impact teasers as well.
I don't think so. They can decide for themselves if they want to participate.
I also want to clarify with this vote, you know, it would be the program as was outlined by Ms. Benton Court. I know that we said we can pick and choose, so if anybody, now would be the time to have that discussion. If anybody feels strongly that we should not do, say, the pool testing, or we should not do the nose swab, the nasal swab, now is the time, because as we proceed and work with the COVID coordinators, all of the information that is recommended, we're going to be putting in this parent letter, which will be going out. I already have it drafted, ready to go. But we want to vet it out with our COVID coordinators if the committee feels that this is the right direction to go in.
So, that was my question. We're voting on not, to, to give parents access or to sign up, but it's for pool testing and for test and stay?
Correct.
Can I just add, I'm, I'm not a fan of the nasal swab. If we could do a cheek swab, I think that would be better for our kids.
So, that, that, I don't know if Ms. Benton Court wants to.
I still have a clarification if it is a choice.
I, I think the one they showed, obviously, is more palatable than the law, and especially I think for younger, the really young kids, right? That might have some more difficulty with the.
It's on, it's on the, it's not high in the nose.
No, the one they showed is not high. I mean, the, the high one for young kids is.
No, they wouldn't even recommend that because they get the cells right. Right.
But we can opt for the spit one, right?
We don't know.
Oh, yeah.
Possibly.
She's getting clarification.
When we vote, though, can we say that's the one if, if it's voted on?
Right. So, you could say that that would be your first choice, if that's what the committee wanted to do, saliva. I think we had questioned it because we're hearing that all these districts are doing that nasal swab. We're not hearing about the saliva, which is, when we talked about it at the CCR meeting, we said saliva was also an option. But, so we have asked for clarification to, to see if, in fact, we have a choice.
Is one more accurate than the, than the?
I don't think so. I think it, they said they're both pretty accurate. So, I think what Mrs. Gomes is saying is that the saliva swab is less invasive for children than the nasal swab. So, I don't have an issue with that at all.
I'm just concerned if we don't have a choice and we vote that that's the choice we want.
No, let's do, let's vote that that's our prefer, well, whatever we agree to. But that would be my preference to do that first, and if it's not offered, then obviously the second one.
Okay, let's see if I can reiterate this.
Sorry, Jen.
No, it's okay. So, what we're looking for this evening is a vote to approve proceeding with the program as outlined this evening and getting parent consent with a preference, if there is an option to the district, with a preference of having a saliva swab over a nose swab. But we realize that that may not be an option for us. So, that is the vote we're looking for this evening.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. All right. So, it looks like we're. Yes, sure. Yep.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Haukraft?
Yes.
Your tabs?
Abstain, please.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
And I think, just to be clear, when we have this on the monthly agenda, this test and stay program is certainly part of that discussion that we're checking in on, right? So, it's new for all of us.
We'll have monthly data on that.
Yes, we'll have monthly data.
That'd be great.
And as I put out in a recent letter, we, we have to report to the Department of Ed every Wednesday evening, so I will be sending out a weekly letter this year instead of a daily. Sometimes I think that just gets to be too much. So, it'll be a weekly letter with the number of students and staff who have tested positive, and we will follow all the protocols for close contacts as we did last year. Any other questions on that? Okay, so that concludes my report tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bailey. Glenn, business manager's report.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I have a quick report for you tonight. I'm not sure how, I, I have copies here, and it looks like some of the numbers aren't easy to see, so I'm not sure what you're seeing on your screen, so I'll go over it a little bit more. We have the, the regular reports that you normally see, the budget update to the school committee. Since the fiscal year is beginning, there aren't too many categories here on this report. The biggest one is salaries. You can see that we have, right now, a lot of funds in salaries due to a lot of our salary movement. You can see we've had some deficits due to non-renewals and terminations. There were six of those. Deficits due to salary adjustments, two of those. Deficit due to leave of absence, three. We've got a surplus due to some transfers, meaning someone transferred into an open position. Surplus due to new positions. So, those new positions we created at town meeting, we hired people generally less than what was budgeted for. Surplus due to retirements, there were five, so any retirements. People that moved into them were, came in actual less than the retirees. Surplus due to resignations. And finally, the biggest one, surplus due to unfilled positions. Currently, we have seven unfilled positions. Now, some of these may be in process. I'm not sure, but in terms of the, the information actually flowing to payroll and personnel, this, we do still have seven open, so we may be in process with interviews with some of these. But right now, so if we don't fill these positions, obviously, that's a surplus with that. So, we have two positions at Ford Middle School, one in math, in math, an AES grade-one position, speech pathologist, two school nurse positions, a paraprofessional, and two, and one building-based sub. So, again, as those positions get filled, you're going to see that surplus lessen. So, and we also do have a few positions in our grants and funds. Title I teacher is unfilled, and two food service workers are unfilled. And again, some of these may, may be in process with interviews, recommendations. I'm not sure, but in terms of actually being finalized, that's what we have. So, we also, I also balance that out with, say, we don't fill the nurse position. Obviously, like last year, we had to employ some contract nurses. So, that is an estimated annual cost of just under $145,000, so pretty near what a filling a, a nurse position in-house would be. So, hopefully, we will have nurses on board soon. I don't know if Dr. Bailey has any updates on, on any of those positions.
I have an update. We have two nurses who are scheduled to start. One, I believe, at the end of this month, and one at the beginning.
October 47th and one October 4.
Yeah. So, one for each school, so we're very pleased that, obviously, they had good notice to their, you know, jobs, their current jobs, but those are two key positions. And in terms of first grade, I believe we do have somebody in the position who is certified, and, you know, we're trying this person out, so.
That was a building-based sub, so that would, that would bring open another building-based sub. Correct. Okay. So, hopefully, next time I report, all of those positions will have been filled and finalized through, through the business office, and I'll have a more accurate portrayal of that for you. Right now, it's too soon to tell with high school tuition. Usually, as of October 1st, we'll get our first enrollment list, and we'll start to get our first billing, so I can update with you, update that with you probably at the November meeting. School choice also, those, that number is published by DESI in December, so we, we will be able to see how we fared what we budgeted for versus what is actual for school choice expenditures. Out of district tuition, there's a small surplus of $22,000. You can see we had a large amount of not budgeted for but attending. And fortunately, we prepaid $135,000 in prepaid tuition, so that really saved us right there, because other than that, we would have a deficit of about $113,000. So, prepaying at the end of the year is always a good safety measure. So, that really helped us out here. Out of district transportation, it looks like we have a, a balance in there, an anticipated balance of just about $300,000. So, that, we'll be looking at both of those accounts, in addition to the salaries and the high school tuitions, constantly throughout the, throughout the, throughout the school year. So, does anyone have any questions on, on that?
I have just a minor question. On school committee expenses, seems that we've, at the beginning of the school year, we've spent $87,000 of our allocation. I'm wondering if that's unusual, or it's a.
Right. So, under school committee expenses, so what Mr.
Go to Hawaii, John. You didn't come with us?
We haven't had that conference yet.
Right. So, what Mr. Haukraft is referring to is the report that's Budget Summary Fiscal '22. It looks like this. And it looks like 87% of the original appropriation is, is used. And that is correct, and that is not out of the ordinary. Most of the school committee expenditures are for the MASC dues and the policy work that we have to pay for. So, the dues we pay for right at the start of the fiscal year as well as the policy work. So, really, what's left is anything for any individual conferences. So, it doesn't look like $1,600, $1,600 left in, available. There'll be too many, you know, that trip to Hawaii, Mr. Haukraft and Mrs. Gomes. It's probably not on the table. So, so yes, that's, that's a good question, but those, that's one account that, you know, we see that typically is expended right out of the gate.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else with the, the budget? Okay. Great. Okay. I also, you know, through the course of the year, I like to update you on all of our sources of funds. We talk about the local budget every meeting. Every few meetings, we talk about grants. At least once a year, we talk about revolving funds. And I thought it would be useful also to add all of our capital improvement articles. So, back in May of 2018, that's when we really started being afforded the opportunity to have articles through town meeting for specific projects. So, this is a summary of all of those articles and the projects, and you can see some of them have been fully expended, some of them have balances, and you can see that the newest ones, it goes in chronological order. So, you'll see at the very end, the roof preventative maintenance, the antenna replacement, which we will likely expend that once the roof is replaced, because that's kind of a coordinating project, and also the replacement of the gym and calf wall. So, that one, actually, I can report to you, is now fully expended because that project has been completed and paid for. So, you can see here, like I said, the various capital improvement articles that we've had. Does anyone have any questions?
No questions. Great to hear. We have a new gym wall.
I know. Finally. Long time coming. It does. There's one, you can see in my facilities report, there's, there's one part that is not, is just not quite finished yet. We need a final adjustment by an electrician for the safety sensor that was added. So, it, when the wall is closing, if someone runs across it, it will, you know, catch that and stop it, so we have some adjustments needed for that. But other than that, it's done. So, in terms of facilities and technology, we had a lot of projects this summer. We had a lot going on in both facilities and technology. Every summer, that's when we're really, our technology staff and our facility staff are very busy. So, I can say the projects that we've completed, last month, I reported to you on some that were completed. I have an update. Mr. Oliver and his team completed the security camera upgrade. The access control and intercom work was also completed through technology. I believe that touch panels are on back order, Mr. Oliver. So, that's, you know, that's unfortunate, but we've been seeing back orders and supply delays and on, on a lot of things, so it's not surprising. The little toy additions, I think that's finally done. The rubber surfacing, the final rubber surfacing was poured last week. Driveway repair was completed by the DPW. That was one of our capital articles. And the shed construction for the lawnmower is underway with Old Colony, so. And currently, in terms of personnel, we have two positions open, a custodian and a maintenance position, and those are both funded through the ESAR grant. We did fill the, the local budget custodian position earlier this month. And of course, you know, our biggest issue, as everyone knows, is the bees. So, we're, that's a daily, a daily battle. In fact, I had one over here at the start of the meeting that I was trying to smother with my phone, but they're crafty, and it escaped, so it's out here somewhere. So, anyways, that's our facilities and technology update. Also, roof update, there was some new news with that. Last week, the owner's project manager contacted me. They've been receiving some information from their contacts that supplies, lead time is not improving. That's why we delayed the project over the summer, because we couldn't get the stuff here. Their hearing is getting worse. So, the original plan was to go out to bid in February to be ready for summer construction. So, we're backing that up, and we're going to go out to bid in October so that everything is all set and done, so that as soon as the last day of school hits, the construction equipment can come in and start in June on that roof. So, the bid opening for general bids is October 21st, for sub bids is 10/7. And we have a site visit scheduled for all interested bidders, parties, suppliers, September 29th. So, that's the update on the roof. And finally, school new patrician update. Mrs. Sheridan, who was here earlier to recognize Shelley Mello, she provided an update for us, but before I do that, I would also like to commend Jean, because while she didn't say it, when she was talking. to commend Jean, because while she didn't say it, when she was talking about the Director of the Year, the Manager of the Year, which Shelley was, if you recall, Jean was Director of the Year a few years ago. So I had the privilege to attend her ceremony in Worcester several years ago, when she was awarded Director of the Year, so I just wanted to, you know, let everyone know that we also have a Director of the Year and a Manager of the Year in our presence, and Jean went pretty far. She not only was the Director of the Year in Massachusetts, she was the Director of the Year in New England, in the New England Territory, and represented, she, I believe she was one of eight nationwide that were in competition for Director of the Year nationwide. So that's a lot to be proud of for Jean. So she does a great job, and I just wanted to mention that to you all once again. So basically, I know, I think, Mr. Tevz, you may have asked what school meals, how they were being provided this year. So what's happening now is we're utilizing both serving lines, serving lines at AES and FMS, students are eating in the cafeteria. FMS, it's, you know, similar to what we've done in the past, they select from a variety of hot grill items or the lunch of the day, and they take home a one-day breakfast bag is offered as students leave each day. So at the time that this report was compiled, about 200 students have been choosing lunch and breakfast each day. And also, you know, of course, all school meals are free throughout the end of this school year, so there's no paying for school lunch. At AES, there's a more limited selection of one hot and two cold choices. These items are packaged, and students can choose a milk, they get a five-day breakfast bag on the first school day of each week, and Mrs. Sheridan reports that about 234 students are choosing lunch, and she's serving about 344 breakfasts per day. So that's just a quick snapshot of the school nutrition program.
Thank you.
All right. So that means, given out like, I don't know what that math is, 1,700 breakfasts on a Monday, is that what's happening?
At, well, at Ford, at the elementary school, yes, they're taking home a five-day breakfast bag, yes, of the students that are electing it, so...
Wild.
They're loving it, because the cereal that they're getting is not provided at my house.
Same here.
Do you have any choices?
Yeah, the choice is hysterical.
It is whole grain, that's what my, that's what my daughter tells me.
Okay.
But they're whole grain, Mom.
It does still have to comply with the meal pattern, it has to be reimbursable and all that.
Much more delicious than what's given provided at home.
So, well, that's good to hear. We want the kids to enjoy school lunch and breakfast.
Kids happy.
That's right.
So, and the only way that we can sustain our program is through all of those reimbursements, so we need to serve the meals, so the students need to take the meals, where there's no revenue from meal sales, there's just the reimbursements, and that's based on the meals served, so that's, that's the tricky part of it.
Do we have a lot of waste? Sorry, I'll talk.
Yeah, that I'm not sure of, I'm really not sure, I know, looking throughout last year and this year, Jean works with the principals to try to figure out how best to get the stuff, get the food home to the children, minimize waste, and, you know, I know Mrs. Grace, who was here last, a few minutes ago, last year would make announcements, not only to take your breakfast home and your lunch, but don't leave it on the bus either, so. So there, you know, it's something that's a work in progress, I think. Any questions on the school lunch program? No. Finally, we have two disposal of school property items, so per school committee policy DN, I believe you reviewed it and approved it at one of the most recent school committees. I'm requesting a majority vote to dispose of the following equipment or material that's grown obsolete and is no longer usable. So the first item is plastic lunch trays. We have supplies about 200 hard plastic lunch trays. They haven't been used in over 15 years, I know we weren't using them when I started working here, and we don't have dishwashing capability, so we don't use these plastic trays. So Mrs. Sheridan would like to dispose of them, and fortunately, you know, one person's trash is another person's treasure, Rentham Public Schools needs these trays, and they would like to purchase them from us at a price of $2 per tray. So that goes right into the school lunch program, that revenue there, so it helps us, and it helps Rentham, and everybody wins. So that's item number one. The second item is the, a list, a very long list of texts and materials the staff determined is obsolete and no longer in use. At the end of last school year, Ms. Rigori directed the effort, and, you know, if there's any questions, hopefully, we can answer them for you. The materials are somewhat, in various degrees of condition and age. I know we've been in touch, she's been in touch with the textbook buyback company, and they're not interested in anything, so I don't think we're, we have a public school that wants our old texts and materials, so. So that, both of those require a vote to dispose of. I don't know if you want to vote one at a time, or both of them at once, however...
Do you need a roll call vote?
Please press one, Jill.
Okay. So if I could request a motion, please, to approve the disposal of the two items noted, plastic lunch trays and text and materials.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And school committee members, any reports? And just note, making note that there are some communications noted in our packets tonight, the letters to family dated August 27th, and then the budget transfers for our reference. It looks like that's the last item on our agenda this evening, so I will proceed, I want to make note that our next regular school committee meeting will be held here in a library at the Ford Middle School on Tuesday, October 12th, at 5:30 PM. So if there's nothing further, if I could request a motion to adjourn our meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, everybody, good evening.
Thank you.